Okay.
Hey, good evening and welcome to the special meeting for December 22nd, 2020 for the Board of Supervisors. I'd like to start off with the roll call and we'll do it the way we normally do roll call around the room, starting with Chief Pasquale.
Brandon Pasquale, Chief of Police.
Dave Chris, Director of Finance.
Jeff Winterbottom, Assistant Manager.
Bob Hart, Township Manager.
Alex Baumler, Township Solicitor.
Supervisor Dennis DeSanto.
Vice Chair Ashley DiPiero.
Joe Givana, Supervisor.
Kevin McDevitt, Chairman of the Board. Okay, the first item on the agenda is we are going to appoint a new supervisor. Due to the recent resignation of East Norton Township Supervisor Amanda Capaletti Esquire, a new supervisor must be appointed by the board. I would like to call on Mr. Hart, our Township Manager, to kind of go over the process and how this all took place and where we're going to go from here. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, on November 3rd, your former colleague Supervisor Amanda Capaletti, as a candidate for State Senate, won her election for the State Senate seat. On November 20th, Senator-elect Capaletti submitted her resignation to the Board of Supervisors effective November 30th of this year. At the time, on the 20th, when we received Amanda's resignation, we posted a advertisement for interested candidates to contact the township and we put the information through our Facebook and, and to be honest, we did word of mouth and as best we could, to solicit interested candidates who might be truly like you all, giving back to their community, being involved in the governance of our community that you all live in. And over that course of seven to 10 days, we awaited applications. Now, I will say, we knew it was going to be a challenging time because due to the whole pandemic situation that we're still in the midst of, we knew it's very difficult for many people to volunteer their time or get involved to a degree that they may like to. But we were very fortunate, I know the board feels that way, is very fortunate that Ms. Winder sent in her letter of interest and her resume for it to be appointed to this position. And I know the board will comment further, but we have, the board has, although I have not met Ms. Winder personally yet in person, I've heard from the board, fantastic things, outstanding resume in front of you tonight. Someone who seems to really care about their community in such a deep way, has a history of volunteering and and being part of making her community better. So I think you're in a great spot as a board to have someone so qualified and so committed in front of you for appointment tonight. So the appointment tonight is also to fill the remainder of Ms. Capaletti's term, which ends in the end of 2021. So that being said, that, you know, if there's an election next year and that that is all on the political side of it. But tonight's appointment would be for the duration of 2021.
Okay, thank you. Jamila, do you have a, just kind of want to tell us a little bit about yourself and, you know, some background?
Sure. Well, thank you for having me and thank you for this tremendous honor. I've been a resident of East Norton for, gosh, 35 years. And so my parents moved here when I was five years, five years old. So I'm showing my age a little bit. I thought I was and who's doing the math? And so grew up in the East Norton area. I still live in East Norton, obviously. Was, went through the public schools. I went to Paul Fly East Norton Middle School and graduated from the high. And so from there, went to Penn State University, majored in communications, have an MBA from Eastern University. And so for the last 16 years, I've been working in a number of capacities, both in K through 12 and post-secondary education, just leading workforce development teams, serving large corporations, health systems, and school systems like School District Philadelphia. And for the last three years, I've been serving as school director with several colleagues within the Norris Town Area School District. And so that's a little bit about me. I just had my first baby, six months old. His name is Max and I live not too far from the Township Building with my family. So that's a little bit about me.
Well, it's great to hear your background and the fact that you've been a long-term resident of East Norton. Board, is there any questions that you have for Jamila?
I don't know whether I'm off mute. I'm off mute. Okay. Hey, Jamila, it's Ashley. So I know that you served on the Norris Town School Board. What type of, and you served on there for how many years now? It's been a couple of years now?
It's been three years.
Okay. So what attributes and what things have you learned that you can kind of recycle? And contribute to our board with your knowledge and your perspective of the Norris Town School District? I know that sometimes we get bombarded with, you know, school taxes and information about school. What kind of things can you kind of integrate? And use that knowledge to help us as a board and in turn help the community? And, you know, kind of linking that bridge between township and school district and, you know, the benefits to each and how separate they are. That makes sense?
Yeah, sure. So that was the question, Ashley. Try my best to answer it. Certainly, the taxing, being a taxing authority, one of the things that I've learned is challenges that our public face from a, from a, you know, from underfunded, unfunded mandates and the effect that that has on our community, especially our seniors, as well as people that are living in the district that don't necessarily have have kids that are going to the district. So there's this, I've learned this constant give and take in terms of the needs of our district constituents, students, and our staff and our administration, and the tremendous tax burden that our residents face. My parents are seniors living in East Norton, so they're paying taxes and have seen taxes increase every year. So what I think I can bring to the board is just helping residents understand why our taxes are the way that they are and some of the challenges that our public schools are facing in Norris Town, especially just getting fair funding from a public school perspective. So taxing is definitely one area of expertise that I can bring to the table. The other piece is just cultural proficiency and just the diverse needs of our community. East Norton, since I've moved here, certainly has grown in the diversity of the population. First African-American family on Hayes Road some 35 years ago. And so that whole cultural proficiency, we spent a lot of time over the last three years trying to raise awareness to the need for cultural proficiency, cultural competence. And I certainly, we've learned a lot that the district needed to do in terms of hiring and in terms of understanding the needs of our staff and our students. And I think I can bring that perspective to this board as we look to serve a diverse group of residents. As East Norton gets more diverse, we have to think about all constituents. And so that cultural proficiency is another thing. So those are two things, Ashley. Certainly, I've learned a lot over the last three years. But those are some of the big things that I can bring to the table.
Excellent. Thanks for your insight.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions for Jamila?
I have a point of clarity, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Hi, Jamila, how are you?
Hi.
Good to see you. So one of the things that was said was that Jamila was the only only candidate who applied. I want to make it very clear that you were the only candidate that applied, but you're not getting the position because you're the only candidate who applied. You're getting the position because you deserve the position. You're qualified for the position and you bring something to the board that's desperately needed.
Thank you.
So I just want to make that very clear that, yeah, you were the only candidate which made it very easy for us. But you're getting the position, you're, I'm voting to appoint you because you deserve the position. You're a great fit and you'll serve the community well.
Thank you, DJ. Appreciate that.
Well said, DJ.
Okay.
Chairman, I want to make one comment.
Sure.
For Jamila yet. I just want to make a comment. I'll piggyback on DJ's comments that I think she'd be a welcome addition to the board. I think the diversity even of the board, it wasn't that long ago, the board was male-dominated and for years up until we had our first female supervisor, you know, in the last 12 years. So now that we have two and that's a good thing. So I like the diversity of our makeup of the board and I think you'll be a welcome addition to that and you'll be a good fit for us as well. So we welcome you, Jamila.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate the comment.
Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, none being, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2823, Appointment of New Supervisor. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a couple there. I'm going to pick Chairwoman DiPiero. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Supervisor.
Congratulations.
I'm really excited to have you on the board.
Thank you so much. I did it to work.
So I guess the next item is we need to get Mark up here. Honorable Mark Alforano?
Yes. Good evening.
Okay, you're going to do the swearing in?
All right, yeah, all right.
This is different, Mark, but good to see you.
You too, Jamila. Normally, there wouldn't be a Christmas tree in the background. Make do with what we have here. All right, well, congratulations. And could you raise your right hand for me, please? And just repeat after me, aye, Jamila Winder?
Aye, Jamila Winder.
Winder, do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend?
That I will support, obey, and defend?
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of supervisor?
And that I will discharge the duties of supervisor?
In East Norton Township?
In East Norton Township.
Montgomery County?
Montgomery County.
With fidelity?
With fidelity.
Congratulations, Supervisor. All right.
Yes, yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Well, I guess we'll proceed to the next item on the agenda and also Supervisor Winder, since you really haven't been involved with any of the the items on this, you may, if you feel more comfortable, you can abstain from voting on this next item.
Okay.
Would be pension reform. I'd like to call on our Township Manager, Mr. Hart, to review this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and congratulations Supervisor Winder. I look forward to working with you and the entire board and really to make, just striving to make East Norton better and better every day.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Sure. Before us tonight is something we've been working on since I got here almost five years ago, pension reform. As you know, one of the biggest obstacles and headaches throughout the Commonwealth are pension, pension plans just in general. And the funding that goes along with it. They are, clearly, they are critical for our employees, but at the same time, they have not evolved with the times. They have not, generally, they have not changed as times in productive ways and successful ways. So we looked at three and a half years, really started looking at our pension plan, which is the civilian pension plan, non-uniformed, is a defined benefit plan, your traditional sort of government pension plan. And we realized the situation we were in, as with almost every township and quite frankly, school districts, states, and everything, every different type of governing body is in similar situations. But we looked at it and thought, how do we, how do we continue to offer our employees a viable pension for their retirement years? And at the same time, get some financial controls around it that will keep it going and keep keep townships viable as a whole from a financial perspective. As you know, we're challenged every year, all governing bodies with, as Supervisor Winder said, with these unfunded mandates. School districts have them and townships have them, from environmental protection, DEP unfunded mandates. And you could go down the list and it's a challenge. And we're not complaining because that's our job to deal with these challenges and they are important. But it's our job and our challenge to find ways to handle them successfully. As part of this pension reform, we had discussed over the last years about a meeting with the supervisors about transitioning to a defined contribution plan, which makes a lot more sense for the township going forward. So in front of tonight is an ordinance that we have been advertised and had advertised, where the defined benefit plan that we're currently in will be frozen as of the end of 2020. Meaning it will stay in place, but no new employees will go into it. So it will freeze. As of July 1st, or July, June 1st, 2021, there will be a new plan put in, a defined contribution plan. And we've worked hard and we're still in the process of fine tuning a second piece of that with deferred compensation that will, that will make it a truly viable and successful retirement plan for our employees, but take some of the burden, the required burden off of township resources. And we think it's important. Many other places have done it in the past and because it was critical. And we've worked very hard to make it a positive, successful transition that we expect. And we think it's going to be of great benefit to the township. So the, everyone who's in the plan now will stay in the plan. All new hires will go into a defined contribution. That being said, on the current plan, we are, first, it's frozen as of the end of this year. We looked at something for the current plan for our current employees. We looked at areas that were really draining us. And we have a drop program, which many, you know, many, many people are familiar in and outside of government, which allows you to retire three years ahead of actually leaving your employment and your your pension checks go into an account. We guarantee a very high interest rate and we give it back to you after the end of three years. This has proven to be, and it's peripheral effects are really a tremendous drain on township, on the township finances and the township really basic management. It is not common in the, on the civilian side of townships or boroughs. It's typically something negotiated with the police. East Norton happens to be one of the townships that actually gave it to the non-uniformed employees, the civilian staff. And it, after going through this for three years and our Finance Director Dave Chris and myself, it was extremely important for us to bring drop to you, to bring an elimination period for drop. So that is, so the current plan for current employees, frozen, we're going to eliminate drop. We are also going to change the status for, I will give you an example. A, an employee, married employee, 65, 70 years old, their spouse passes away. They pass away. Their checks, their pension checks, 50% of their pension checks in everywhere else I've ever heard other than East Norton, would continue, 50% of the pension check would continue to go to any children they have until those children turn 18. That's your typical. Somehow, decades ago, East Norton put a place in where that same scenario, that pension check would go to the children until the children pass away. So there are retirees in that situation who have children that are 40 years old that are still getting 50% of their parents' pension in perpetuity. It didn't make any sense to us, our pension advisors, just about any, any professional that we spoke to. And it is a liability that doesn't seem to make sense in any way, but is a significant drain on township finances. That being said, so we're taking the drop away, we're taking, we're moving that benefit change, we're going to continue to give it, but until the children turn 18, just like, which is typical, the typical plan. What we're doing in exchange for that, we currently have a 10-year vesting period and a 10-year tiered vesting period. So you don't, you don't qualify for a pension for 10 years. We are changing, we are lowering that to five years. Now, I'll give you an example. If you hear that, you're, it sounds like, well, the township's, it's a negative for the township and a positive for the employees. Well, I'll say that this is a positive for the employees and for the township. Because currently, when you have someone who's been at the township for seven years working and they leave, we give them all their money back, all their pension money. They take it, you know, because they don't qualify yet for a pension. They take their money. And for years, the township was giving their money, but also guaranteeing them 7.5% interest on the money they put in there. All the while, some years, the township was making 0% on bad years, or 2% or 3%, but we were guaranteeing seven and a half. So when people would leave after six, seven, eight years, nine years, they would, they would take all that money and all that interest. It was really an obscene financial decision by the township years ago that, that got into that. And it really was just sort of not looked into for probably a couple of decades and we looked into it. So we're going to change the vesting to five, five years. We also, the current, it's very confusing and I don't want to confuse the heck out of everybody, but when they calculate a pension payment, it is years of service times a multiplier. And our system in East Norton, which has been in place for decades, was archaic. It truly wasn't even a fair, it didn't provide a fair or reasonable pension plan and pension payment for our employees. So we have been looking at that and understood that wasn't fair and it's important that that be updated. But at the same time, knowing we were taking drop away and the other, the other change as far as benefits for, you know, as, as your children age to 18, we thought the vesting, the multiplier, we would raise the multiplier to 1.65 times the years of service. That's confusing. It doesn't, it's more a technical thing, but it's a raise. It's an increase from where we currently are. And I'll give you an example. It is still, we were at one. We're at 265 now, or 165 now, which, which we're proposing. The state is at 2.25, which is what we consider not being very prudent. But as you can see, we're, we're trying to get in the reasonable stage, the reasonable area that gives our, our employees a reasonable amount that they can count on as a, as a retirement plan. And at the same time, not, not, not either hurt them or not give some kind of windfall that doesn't make sense. So we really feel that this is not only fair, when we have brought some employees in to discuss it with them, they were actually thrilled about this change because it does benefit them from the archaic computations that went on in the past. But at the same time, it really makes a lot of sense for us in the big picture as far as a plan goes. And then lastly, we created a senior management, management position level where the Board of Supervisors will have the discretion of who they put into that, whether it's one, two, or three people, depending on who it is. It's a, it's a management level pension that is similar to the police pension. It will, but it will also give supervisors, especially in years, in years going forward, the opportunity to read, not only retain some, a key employee, we don't have drop anymore. So there may be instances where you really need to retain someone for a year or two or, or more. And also recruit someone with, with really good credentials and experience. I use our Finance Director Dave Chris for an example, which he's probably mortified that I'm using him as an example now. But I'll say this, Dave Chris is our, is our Finance Director. He's also our IT guru. He's, you know, he makes great coffee. He's, he's, he literally is, he's everything under the sun. That's what Dave does for us, right? So I can go out and get an accountant, a 30-year-old accountant who can do the numbers. I can't get a Dave Crist, who's a professional with a long career, who brings so many, so many skills and intangibles to the table that benefit the residents of East Norton and us as administrators and you as elected supervisors, elected supervisors, these intangibles and these talents and skills and experiences he brings. I can't, it's, 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 there's no money attachment to it because it has saved us hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not more, just over the course of the last few years. So this gives us that opportunity and the board an opportunity to have a situation in there where they can recruit and eventually retain more senior staff. That is really the fundamental changes of this plan. We think it's a huge step forward. There may be some other changes in years to come. And there are other non-actually pension ordinance changes that we are going to also change that will affect this. But they are done through internal changes with the Employee Handbook and policies that you will be looking into at your reorganization meeting in January that will even help these benefits even more and help the township in a much more reasonable but fiscally responsible way. We think we took into everybody, all accounts, that we not only make changes, but we were fair and provide the employees who work so hard for us, especially in the pandemic year, that really stepped up, went above and beyond. We wanted to take, to make sure that they were taken care of. They were offered, they were offered good substantial retirement plans, but at the same time, that were nuanced enough that gives the township some, some resources and some control of our finances and our, that they're not a runaway pension plan. And we really feel we have that in front of you today. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. I know we've discussed this quite a bit, but I'm here if you have any questions. Other than that, that's all I have.
Okay, Board, do you have any questions? Anybody from the Board?
Mr.? I, I just have a comment. I think, Mr. Hart, you and I spoke earlier about, like, this is more of like, we're playing chess, not checkers, kind of for fiscal responsibility and long-term game for the benefits of East Norton in a whole. So I just want to commend you and everybody that's worked on this plan and the fiscal responsibility that it shows. And I just appreciate you and I appreciate all the time that you and David have put into this. Thank you. That's really it.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, none being, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2823. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one. Starting the meeting over again.
Come on, Kevin.
Okay, I think, Dave, Bob, I think you put me to sleep a little bit there.
I did.
Okay, again, I would like
Stay with that coffee.
Yeah, I need that coffee, Dave. All right, Pension Reform Amendment. I would like to make a motion to approve the Pension Reform Amendment. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, thank you Supervisor. Okay, thank you Supervisor Givanas. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Dave, do we have any citizens to be heard?
We do not, Mr. Chairman. There are no emails in the info email box.
Okay, then the next item would be the manager's update. Bob, you're back on.
Yeah, I have, I, I will make this short. I'll, I'll be motivated.
What he always says.
Set the timer.
That's what he always says.
Yeah. If you hear me snoring, Bob, just kind of give a tap.
I want to offer, if you have children or great, young children or grandchildren that are having trouble sleeping, I'll be glad to Zoom, talk about the pension reform. No, I just, I really just want to say thank you and on behalf of our staff, all of our staff. And my, we, we are so thankful that, of your leadership and letting us do the things we do. Not everybody has that, not everybody has that relationship with a board that can go back and forth and be creative and make things happen. We are excited to have Supervisor Winder on, on the, on the team now. And I will be reaching out to her soon to bring her up to speed on all this fantastic information. But, but again, I'd like to wish everyone a, a very Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays, and really stay safe and enjoy your, your, your family and loved ones.
Okay, thank you. Any, any questions for the manager? Okay, is there anybody has any comments or something for the good East Norton Township?
Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year. 2021 is going to be much better, right?
Looking forward to it. Okay, if there's nothing else, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Chairwoman DePiero. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays.
Happy New Year.
Holidays. Bye-bye.